Welcome to our special Erie Science Hour. We had a meeting with the Scientific Steering Committee a couple of weeks ago, and people were reporting on the EGU. And what we've heard was very positive. And we thought, you know, EGU presentations and posters are really very, very well prepared. So why not, you know, take the opportunity and have a bit of a session afterwards? I mean, we could have thought about this earlier and not call this in last minute. But, you know, that's the way things work sometimes. So, yeah, once again, thanks everyone for joining in. I think we have a nice program lined up. Basically, the presentations will be done in two parts. Most of the people who attended the EGU will be presenting today. But just a reminder that we will continue with two more presentations in a week from now when we have our regular Science Hour. So that is going to be a little bit longer than usual. This also will be recorded just for information. And the idea is to cut these little different contributions then to cut them together, you know, cut them and then, you know, make them available as well. But no pressure, you know, for the presenters here, okay? Yeah. Yeah, I think today we have really mostly poster presentations. And what we decided to do is to offer everyone, you know, five minutes for the presentation. And then we have something like five minutes for a joint discussion. And you have seen the agenda. So, yeah, with this, I think I would hand over our first speaker, which is Casper, on your poster presentation. Casper, over to you.
Thank you very much, Thomas. So I will share my screen. Can you confirm that you can see my poster?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So the topic of my poster is implementation of implicit filter for spatial spectral extraction. But the most important part is that we developed Python implementation for a new method that allows to filter data on any mesh. Here you can see on the image A, a source data that we treat with a high pass filter with a size of 150 kilometers. And on the image C, the results of high pass filter. Sorry, this is the low pass, this is the high pass filter. And the thing with our filter, it is working natively on the unstructured mesh. So basically, instead of interpolating down to regular grid or some kind of coarse resolution, our method simply deletes certain information from your data without altering them in terms of their position, their structure in any way. And our method is very performant. We can process database non-structure meshes with over 10 million nodes in a matter of seconds using just one GPU. And we just recently published a preprint of our paper. And our method is available on GitHub. And now I will show you how you can try it on your soul. It's on the FIZOM/implicitfilter repo that you can also see on my poster. Then you can do to install it, you simply need to clone it from GitHub and install it using pip. The GPU support is optional. So even if you don't have GPU, you can use it without any problem. And using it is very, very straightforward. You simply import your mesh, import your filter object, prepare it based on your mesh file or the mesh array. And you are basically ready to go. And also, our method uses, recomputes certain auxiliary arrays for given mesh. So the mesh loading. Sure, I will put the link in a moment. So the pre-computation for mesh has to be done only once. Later it can be loaded from file. And simply you can filter your data. And we provide quite a few examples. If you go into the examples directory, for example, here you have real color data. And we present it based on FIZOM mesh. You can simply put for triangular mesh, you can simply get the coordinates, the triangles array and prepare it with this with one command. And later on, you just simply compute. So we just provide the filtering scale with data. And basically, that's it. So you can see the original data and what we get after our filter was applied. And as you can see, based on the time magic in the Jupiter, this, I think, 7 million nodes mesh was processed by our method in something on order of 2.5 seconds. So I highly recommend you check out our paper and our GitHub repo. And if you'd like to integrate our implicit filter into your workflow, I will be more than happy to assist. So thank you for your time. And I hope I didn't extend my time too much.
No, I think we did an excellent job, Casper. Thank you very much. And, yeah, I mean, if you do have any questions, please, you know, switch your video on or drop your question in the chat field. And I see the first question from Dion. Dion, over to you.
Hey, really splendid work, Casper. I'm quite curious. So it's a spectral filter, right? How do you specify, I guess, your wavelength that you want to cut, you know, your spatial cutoff and all that? Is it per wavelength globally? Can it be varying or is it at a fixed value? How do you approach this?
Right now, we specify global wavelength. But we also have per user convenience, this method converts to wave numbers that you can just put your distance and approximate mesh resolution. So you can put it in kilometers and it will convert it for you.
I see, okay.
But it is possible to also make it variable. So for each, let's say, for each element in the coordinate, you could add different scales. This is possible, but it would require a bit.
A bit more.
A bit more playing inside of the code. But if one would like to use it, we are very open to extending the support for this.
Do you also intend to implement this within FIZOM itself as an online filter?
Maybe in the FIZOM 3, if there would be need for such a thing.
As in for like in a coupled system where instead of, I mean, all these filtering that you're doing right now is offline, right? After the model has run. So there's usually some thought about putting it online. Then you can actually test for different types of coupling that different length scales gets divided. But then that would require implementation into the actual model itself.
Our method is 100% pure Python. So we would also be requiring the model to be running or at least be compatible with Python. But with the current performance that we have, there is no issue with running it online with the model.
Okay. Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we used up our 10 minutes. So thank you very much, Casper. If there are further questions for him, please drop them in the chat field and we can have some exchange here. And so then I would next invite Jan Gertner for his poster presentation. Jan, over to you.
Can you hear me well and see the screen? Okay. So what I did, I was detecting linear kinetic features in high resolution model output in the Arctic sea ice. And I compared the current climate with a warmer world. So first some words to the model data that I used for this. So Xinyu and some colleagues, they let FIZOM run in a coupled setup from 1968 to 2100, so coupled atmosphere and ocean. And in this run, they also had, they made some comparison with the current climate to observational data. And that matched quite well. And also, by the end of the century, which they simulated by the SSP 585 scenario, they had quite a good match with all the other CMF6 models. And, yeah, this scenario predicts an increase in global mean surface temperature by four degrees. And this 150-year run, they had run with an Arctic resolution of five kilometers and thirty kilometers everywhere else. And then in some specific time slices, so I analyzed the time slices from 2010 to 2020 and 2090 to 2100. In these time slices for 10 years, they interpolated the five kilometer Arctic grid to a one kilometer Arctic grid. And then had these 10 years run with kilometer scale resolution. And, yeah, that's the data for the Arctic sea ice that I've been using. And I was analyzing the sea ice velocity field for linear kinetic features, which are leads and pressure ridges. And, yeah, so I was looking for a climate change signal in this. And I've been using a detection algorithm that searches for locally higher sea ice deformation. And what it outputs is something like this. So here you can see the Arctic, background is the sea ice deformation, and the colored lines are linear kinetic features. And so the algorithm only looks for locally higher values of sea ice deformation. So it doesn't differentiate between leads and pressure ridges. And it's just puts them together as linear kinetic features. And, yeah. So this is something like a direct comparison between the two decades that I've analyzed. Left we see sea ice extent, right we see mean sea ice thickness. And here we see a pretty strong decline in the Arctic sea ice cover. So by the end of the century, you can see that in summer, the Arctic sea ice is pretty much gone. That's why also only in the 2090, I analyzed the winter period. It's gonna come in handy later. There's also. So I've done some statistical analysis of those linear kinetic features. And here we can see a comparison of the number of detected LKFs and their spatial density in current climate versus the warmer world. And you can see that we have a pretty strong or pretty clear increase in LKFs by the end of the decade. And you can also see that by the end of the decade, the number of LKFs in winter is still larger or the number is larger than the number in current climate in summer. And, yeah, what is also, I think, interesting here is that here you can see in December and January, where the ice is still in the freezing phase, you can see the density going down by quite a bit. Yeah, as the sea ice is still growing and becoming much stronger and thicker and thus reducing the sea ice deformation and therefore also the leads and pressure ridges. Some other statistics I had are the length of the linear kinetic features. And here we see mean length and the total summed up length. And so the mean length is decreasing while the number is going up. But in total, the total LKF length is still going up. We still see in, again, in December, January, we can see a pretty significant change as the sea ice field is changing much. But then in the winter phase where the sea ice is fully formed, we can see that in a warmer world, we have much higher total length of linear kinetic features. So more area for leads and pressure ridges. And one thing that I did not include here on this poster is the lifetime of the LKFs, which I also compared. But this one does not change between current climate and warmer world. And here the average is like two or three days anyways, because most of the LKFs are like gone after one day or two. And there are some that have a lifetime of a few weeks. But the majority is just like by one day. This does not change much. And what we can also look at is the spatial distribution of the linear kinetic features. And here we see the LKF frequency in December till, from December till May, so in winter, in current climate. And what this means, so a value of one corresponds to this grid box having a linear kinetic features all of the time. And value of zero means there's never been an LKF. And here we see that those linear kinetic features are mainly formed around the coastal areas and at the boundaries of islands. And this because there we have just a closed boundary, which increases the sea ice deformation and therefore also the formation of LKFs. And by the end of the century, in a warmer world, we see. So here in current climate, like we have higher values at the boundaries. But like at the inside, it's more or less, or like it's pretty homogeneous, I would say. But by the end of the century, we can see some pretty clear regions where we have higher LKF frequencies. And like again, also the coastal areas have higher LKF frequency, but also inside the Arctic, we now have this region. And if we look at it, this matches the bottom topography of the Arctic. If this is not too confusing, if I zoom in and out all the time. So bottom topography, here we have the shelf break, which is this line here. And also another prominent feature is here the Lomonosa ridge, where we have prominent bottom topography. And this is something like this imprint we can see here on the LKFs. Like this is the most pronounced area where we have a higher frequency, but also in this area. And this is because in these areas, the ocean surface velocity, which is something that Xinyu also calculated in her paper, is increasing by the end of the century. So this is ocean surface velocity comparison 2013 to 2093. And here we can see in current climate, it's, I mean, there are some regions where we have higher ocean surface velocity. But by the end of the century, like the ocean surface velocity increases and it's also a bit more heterogeneous, I would say. And here we can also see the bottom topography here, the shelf break up here and this Lomonosa ridge. And here too, like both of these, both two effects come together to form more linear kinetic features. One is the increased surface velocity and one is the decreased sea ice strength. So the lower thickness and lower ice concentration. And if you really try hard enough, you can kind of convince yourself that you might see the alpha ridge here. But I think the most prominent are the shelf break up here and the Lomonosa ridge in this region. Yeah, that's it from my side for now. Thanks for your.
Thank you, Jan. Very interesting, I think, very clear. Are there any questions? We have time probably for one. Sorry, oh, crystal clear. Yeah, it's interesting to see the ice, the topography shining through in the future. It's amazing. Yeah, okay. There are no questions. If something comes up, drop your question in the chat field and then Jan can answer this there. So then we continue with Stella, which is another poster presentation on the detection and tracking of mesoscale ocean eddies. Over to you.
Sorry, my computer is now making me change things. Oh, see, sorry for that. I will try to share again.
Don't worry. By the end of Erie, hopefully, everyone will be experts on WebEx and all the settings are, you know, okay.
Okay, you can see the screen. Okay, great. So, hi, I'm Stella. I'm from ETH Zurich. And at TTH, what we do in the first six months of our PhD is just mostly read and figure out what we want to do in our PhD. So, and because I started my PhD only six months ago, I've mostly done just reading. So my poster was with tiniest amount of results and mostly what I would like to do in the future, which is actually very useful because people gave me so many interesting ideas, which I still have the time to implement. So this is how in general my poster looked. And what I want to take you through is, maybe not everyone here has actually tracked eddies. And I have decided that my PhD will in general be about mesoscale eddies as in the round circular things that spin. So tracking of eddies and various types of tracking, to look into that is very important for me. So in my past year, I had this introduction about how up until now we have done eddy tracking in our project, which is by using PyEddi tracker and a rather Eulerian method of tracking eddies, which is counterintuitive because we are tracking them. But it's still a Eulerian method because we are finding the eddies on sea surface height fields, which are instantaneous. And we just draw our circle around a sea surface height anomaly and then just find them in the next time step. And that's how we get our trajectory. Why am I talking about this? It'll be more relevant or like obvious when I get to what I want to do in the future. So it was also very useful to have this kind of example of how we track eddies. Because although it's so obvious to me and the people around me, this is not very obvious to other people. Then the tiniest bit of results that I had on my poster is that I actually ran eddy detection for the whole ICAN dataset that we currently have. And I did some very preliminary plots of comparing the model output to what we have from observations from a viso. And this, so the blue squiggly lines are cyclonic eddys tracks. The red squiggly lines are cyclonic eddys tracks the other way around. Doesn't really matter. But what you can see is that in general, in ICAN, the long-lived eddies tend to come from the correct places, go into generally correct directions. So on like very large scale picture, things seem to be fine. And we were spent so much time just staring at these and figuring out whether where the eddies go makes sense. But I think it makes quite a lot of sense. And it was interesting to see that because of the sea ice, lack of sea ice in ICAN run, because we had the sea ice hole, we actually have quite a lot of eddies in Arctic, which you cannot see in observations or in any other models. And now probably the major part of my poster was talking about what I do, what I want to do in the future. And so this lists kind of two out of three questions that I want to look at in my PhD. And first thing I want to look at is how leaky are eddies? So what I want to do is do a Lagrangian eddy tracking, which means, which compared to the Eulerian one, which I introduced earlier. Here I will try to seed the velocity fields of model with Lagrangian particles, evolve them in time and look for rotationally coherent Lagrangian vortices. And this will show me that kind of the coherent part of the eddy. So what is the actual trapped amount of water in the eddy that is transported from point A to point B? Because it's very interesting that a lot of studies assume that the boundary you draw with the sea surface height, that that's kind of impenetrable, that the water that's within the boundary at this time of a de-creation is actually the same water that's within the eddy at the time of its death, which for me seems very, a very big approximation. So I am very much interested into the Lagrangian view of the eddy and actually looking at its coherence and how does the Lagrangian eddy compare to the Eulerian one. And I think it's perfect for Erie because we have also the 3D data, which the observations lack. And another question that I want to look at are the short-lived eddies, which I have a hunch that they have been underappreciated in the past because of the kind of constraints that observations have put on eddy research. Because you previously had only weekly, for example, a viso dataset. So you needed to track eddies for at least four weeks to say that it's an eddy. So I think studies disregarding all the short-lived eddies might lead to some biases in the results. So I want to just pay more attention to the short-lived eddies. And yes, these are, this is kind of my aim. This is how my aim, 3D rotational coherent vortex would look like, hopefully, in the end. So, yeah, that was my poster.
Oh, thank you very much. I can't wait to see those, I have to say. Thank you very much. Before handing over to Mark, just one question. I mean, you said, you know, 3D data from the models are there. In principle, they are there. Are you sure? I mean, it would be nice, number one is really to, you may want to start with one model, but you know, later on, look as many as possible, you know, to look at a little bit and understand model uncertainty. But I think it may also be worth double checking that, you know, the data 3D at the temporal and spatial resolution that you need are actually there. Okay, but I think in principle, I think it looks very exciting what you are planning to do. Welcome.
Yeah, I saw that. That looks great. So in terms of the short-lived eddies, so then are there new observations coming up that allow you to assess those rather than just the viso? Or do you have a new method that uses existing data to be able to do that in a clever way?
So there is now this new satellite altimeter that has a higher resolution, has very short amount of, so it has short time of data available. But I might look into that and see what's available. But, yeah, you're raising a valid point that we are limited by the observations. I will need to figure that out. I don't have a concrete answer now.
Are there more questions, comments? Dion, please.
Stella, nice. I wanted to ask, so this Lagrangian one, are you guys going to use some sort of threshold with vorticity? Or how do you define the edges of the eddies in 3D?
Yes, there is this, what was on my poster, there is a variable that's called Lagrangian average vorticity deviation, which is, which is actually developed at TTH with one of. Ryan Abernathy in Columbia does very often, which is where you, if you back your eddy, so you chuck all your particles for the delta t time and you calculate the average vorticity of your, what your parcel had. And from that, you can see which parcels in your delta t time were spinning like this. And that's how you say which parcels were inside of the eddy because you assume a solid body rotation of the eddy, which is coherent. So this is the Lagrangian average vorticity deviation. This is the variable that I will use.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Anna, please.
Yes, I wanted to know how you will unravel the transport of water by the eddies and the modification of the properties inside the eddy by the air sea fluxes. Because you can have quite deep mixed layers. And so as your eddy is moving, the properties are changing. An eddy that was a warm anomaly may end up being a cold anomaly a little farther because it underwent some strong air sea exchange. So is that part of the questions you are asking? Or is that rather a problem you would like to get rid of or?
I don't think it's a problem for me because in the Lagrangian sense, I'm, I don't care what temperature the particle, that parcel has. However, my colleague, Postdoc Aaron, who's also in this project, he will be looking more at the air sea interactions of the eddies and also the how the eddies might change, go from a cold core eddy to a warm core eddy. So that is something that our group is looking at. I'm just not the one looking at it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you again, Stella. Then we can continue with Benoit. Benoit, over to you.
Hello. Do you hear me?
What we could do is we could also give you a little bit more time and continue with Dion, if that is of any help.
Perhaps that's better.
Okay, let's jump then to the next one. Dion, are you ready to go?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, clicking the share button. I think you guys. Yeah, um, clicking the share button, um, I think, you guys seeing this?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so this is the poster. It's mostly about, um, mesoscale ARI coupling from both Eulerian and Lagrangian perspective. Or I guess what Stella would say would be Eulerian and semi-Eulerian instead of Lagrangian, uh, because it uses the PyEddy tracker. But anyways, um, perhaps I, so it's two parts and it's easier to view, um, it's two columns. So the first part is from an Eulerian perspective, we're looking mostly at the thermal feedback and the current feedback and mostly trying to look at the spatial scale dependency of these ARI couplings. So in the thermal feedback, that would be mostly between, say, sea surface temperatures and winds, whether it's wind speeds or wind divergence or curls. Um, but we just look first at the SST and wind speeds. And basically what we see is that if you compute the coupling, which is just a regression of the wind speed against the SSTs, based on the total fields, you have this negative relationship, uh, which basically means warmer, uh, sorry, if you have faster winds, then you have cooler SSTs, mostly through the waste feedback. Um, and if we separate them out into the large scales and the mesoscale, the separation is done by performing a three degree spatial, uh, two degrees spatial smoother on it. So anything bigger than two degrees, we see on a large scale, it's, it looks a lot like the total fields. But if we look into the mesoscale, so anything higher than two degrees, um, the relationship is actually the opposite. It's positive, meaning like warmer SSTs, faster wind speeds. Um, and that could be explained through the vertical mixing mechanism, where you draw momentum from winds aloft to the surface. And so warmer, over warmer SSTs, you have faster winds. Um, we took a look also at the current feedback. Again, everything is about assessing the spatial scale dependencies of these ARI coupling. So for the current feedback, um, some of the ideas is if you, um, just, just the yellow lines gives you the background winds. And if you don't account for any cyclones or anticyclones or the Eddies themselves, then the wind stress, which is the dashed purple, is pretty much constant, then you don't induce any curl. But if you do include the, um, Eddies themselves, so in this case, it's an anticyclone in the northern hemisphere. Uh, what happens is that, um, if it's in the same direction as the winds themselves, so the current and the winds in the same direction, then you have less stress. If in the opposite directions, you have much more wind stress and that can induce a curl. The thing to note is that the curl is in the opposite direction of the rotation from the currents themselves. If however, you apply this to just the winds themselves, so the, the background winds with the, uh, impact of the surface ocean in the same direction has less drag. So your wind is faster, uh, wind in the same direction, but it's lower, you have slower winds if they're in opposite directions. And this would induce a wind curl that is of the same direction as that of the currents. So basically you can compute like the relationship between surface currents or the vorticity of surface currents with wind stress curl or wind curl. And you get this, this similar idea where if you have it, the total fields, or if it's just a large scale or the mesoscales, for the surface vorticity against wind stresses, they are in opposite direction, which is reflected here. Mesoscales are the ones responsible for this. In a large scale, they're generally in the same direction. Uh, if you look into the wind curl, they are of positive relationship because it's the same direction of rotation. Um, and then in the large scale, they look very much alike between wind stress curl and wind curl. This makes sense because you would imagine anywhere where you have subtropical gyre, that's also where you usually have your, um, subtropical highs in the atmosphere. And if you look in the relationship between stress curl and wind curls, you do see that they have very low relationship in Eddy regions. Basically, we're trying to extract out the effects of mesoscale Eddies, uh, for ARI coupling. Um, and this is also obvious on wind work where, uh, in general, they're generally positive. So you have wind input into the ocean. Um, but at mesoscales itself, you have this negative relationship that's indicative of the Eddy killing effect. Um, we now move over to Lagrangian perspective. I guess you guys have seen this. This is the Eddy composites from the Gullis region based on Ican. Um, and you can see imprints for where you have anticyclones, you have your warm anomalies. Um, we have also precipitation anomalies that coincide with downwind SST gradients and convergences. So you can see sort of an atmospheric imprint from these ocean mesoscales. And this is the idea for that. If we, um, I think the one I do want to bring up a little bit more is this Eddy-induced Ekman-upwelling. So we see, um, beforehand, the atmospheric response to Eddies. But now let's look into, um, coming back to the ocean, how these Eddies can affect the atmosphere and that in turn can affect the ocean, so the feedback into the ocean. And this would be this Eddy-induced Ekman-upwelling based on Stern and Gasp's work in the past, uh, where the total Ekman velocity within an Eddy can be decomposed into a component from the wind stresses, uh, wind stress curl and a component from vorticity gradient. The wind stress curl, you have the similar idea where, um, again, with background, westerly background winds and anticyclone can induce a, um, positive wind stress curl. And, and curl basically, so that's upwelling in that sense. When you have positive, uh, wind stress curls, that's an, that's indication of an upwelling. Um, that's just based on the winds. Based on the vorticity gradients, this is the, the vorticity of the surface currents. Um, there is a gradient with a mid, for an anticyclone, you have a minimum at the center and a maximum at the peripheries of the Eddies. And so the gradient actually is more, um, it induces a dipole in the upwelling downwelling. So it's upwelling on the northern part and then downwelling on the southern part. And so you kind of get an asymmetric sort of upwelling downwelling induced within the Eddy itself. And this is actually can be seen, uh, from the model output where you have the, over the Eddy itself, you have this wind stress curl, uh, upwelling just from the wind stresses. Vorticity gradient induces a dipole and overall it produces an asymmetric dipole around the Eddy. Um, what is interesting is that typically anticyclones, if we think about anticyclones, they, we generally associate them with downwelling, just because of the rotation. That's how they, we generally associate them with. This one here shows that the Eddy impact on it actually acts in the opposite direction. Um, and so it's a little bit counterintuitive. So this is just preliminary in a sense that, uh, computing the, the contributions from wind stress curl and vorticity gradient, as well as the total Ekman velocities. You can see in an subtropical regions, um, it's the typical downwelling based on, in the subtropics. I have yet to do perhaps this, uh, spatial filters again to see if the impact of Eddies can be extracted that gives actually some sort of these upwelling signatures, um, associated with Eddies. Yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, Dion. That looks great. Are there any questions? How far are you in writing this up? I mean, the first part, and the last part is this is relatively new, that we have a reference, you know?
Uh, people have been asking me this and since I have a new position, I have a lot of other responsibilities and just looking for partners to help me with it or would like to join. Malcolm has a question. Malcolm, you can help me write this up, right?
Sorry, I, I'm not on, yeah, I'm not offering. Um, but it's, ha- has there been a paper that's looked at the lat-long spatial coupling coefficient? I was trying to look it up for, I don't know, for our technical report or the, the draft paper that I, that I was doing on our model. Has anyone published those, those global fields of the regression before? Or is that, is that new? I couldn't find a, a paper that showed that globally, but.
Uh, Renault has published, um, quite, I mean, I, I took a lot of this coupling coefficients from his paper, 2016. Uh, Renault has done it, um, a few of his papers, actually. They are not necessarily global per se, because most of his model runs are regional, but they extend quite wide. Yes.
Okay, right, alright.
And I, I think I have seen global maps from observations, right? Satellite, satellite and, uh, trajectory analysis. I, I don't remember where.
I've, I've seen, I've seen correlation coefficients globally. Indeed, I think I've published a correlation coefficient globally, but I just haven't seen the regressions globally before. But, but I say maybe I'm missing a, I'm, I'm missing the references.
The ones that are global yet, mostly regional. But then, like I said, Renault's paper is, his regional is quite big to the extent that he says it should not look too different. The global fields should not look too different.
Okay. But I have, yeah, not to go on too long, but, um, I was presenting, um, some of those figures earlier and it does occur to me that, that there's potentially interesting links between the Eddy-ing in the models and the ARI interaction and the mesoscale features and our filtering them out. Um, and maybe the, the atmosphere only simulations we're planning to do might tell us more about. If you filter out the Eddies, does that change the, the coupling strength, um, in the atmosphere only model? So that I think there's, there's potentially some interesting links between some of these different aspects that, um, we should definitely, um, investigate. Um, but yeah, we need some people to, uh, lead, lead us and write, yeah, energetic people to write those things up, yeah.
Thank you very much. I think in the interest of time, we have to move on and we can try Benoit for second time. Benoit. It works, beautiful, yeah.
It works now. They're very loud.
Yes, we can hear you. It's a bit loud and noisy, but give, give it a go. We can see and we can hear. Go ahead.
Is it better? Perfect. So, uh, my, um, my proposal was about original ARI trend inferred from climate model at different spatial resolution. So here we have the observation from Aviso, uh, without the global min C level uh, between nineteen ninety-three and two thousand fourteen. And, uh, the goal of the, of the, of my study and my PhD, uh, is to, uh, uh, compare different resolution in order to see what the impacts of Eddies, uh, on, uh, the global resolution. So for that, we, uh, I use the model AGEM. So, uh, it's a model with CIP, uh, so the, so the model AGEM has, has fifty, fifty-five runs, uh, at lower resolution, so one degree resolution, uh, but only four runs at medium resolution. So what fourth, uh, of a degree, uh, of resolution? So this will be a, a bit of a limitation for the rest of the study. So, uh, to compare this, uh, with the control, we made, um, artificial, uh, ensembles of twenty-nine, uh, members each for, uh, the control run and, uh, on a lower resolution and medium resolution. Uh, with forty percent data overlap between, uh, each member of the ensemble. So now we have the, the first figures. So, uh, on your left, uh, you are on your right, sorry, you have, uh, the ensemble mean of historic trends, uh, at lower and higher resolution. And, uh, we can see here that, uh, some of the, um, most famous currents, uh, are not resolved at lower resolution, that does not resolve mesoscale Eddies, but is more resolved at higher resolution, medium resolution, like the Kuroshio, uh, near Japan or the Gulf Stream, uh, which, uh, are, uh, closer to the observation that we have here. So, um, however, uh, the, the second figure is to take with a grain of salt because if the first figure is a, is a respectable ensemble with fifty-five members that can be approximated to externally, externally forced response, since, uh, internal variability has been averaged within the ensemble. As a other, uh, figure, uh, housingly as four members. So for that, we will look at the control runs, uh, which are much higher in number of ensemble. Uh, and so here we have the STD of control runs at lower and medium resolution uh, for twenty-two years, which is the same, uh, the same time as the historical runs. So, uh, since this is, uh, the STD of non-force model, we can approximate this to, uh, saying it's, uh, it's representative of the internal variability of the model. Uh, so, uh, we can see that, uh, at a few points, the, the, the higher resolution model gives us, um, the, the current we saw earlier. Like the Kuroshio is a very, uh, is very internal, uh, internally driven. So in order to compare these two and to, uh, separate the internal variability and external forcing, we make a ratio signal over noise. So, uh, the ratio of the ensemble mean historic, meaning, uh, the, uh, forced, uh, the forcing, uh, over the, the ensemble STD control, so the internal variability. Uh, when the ratio is over two, so yellow to red, uh, we can say that the force response exceeds internal variability with ninety-five confidence interval. So we can see on the lower resolution that we have a force response that is, uh, confirmed around the Arctic and the Greenland and the Labrador Sea, where the, there is a lot of ice melting, as well as around the ACC. Uh, if we compare that with, uh, the medium resolution, we have a lot more, um, we have a lot more emergence, uh, along the coast of, uh, uh, the US and, uh, near the Gulf Stream, uh, as well as the ACC and the Arctic area. Uh, and the, um, the low, the low amount of, uh, of, uh, member in the ensemble is, um, uh, we, we have, uh, a lot of the number in the STD control. So it's, uh, way closer to reality that, uh, that if we use, uh, only historical data to, uh, make this run. So, uh, in, to measure, to measure this, uh, we have shown that internal variability and force response displayed different trends pattern over twenty-two years for a low and medium ensemble. Uh, internal variability leave large imprints on the regional ARI trends, uh, in the Kuroshio. The, for example, here we cannot see, uh, the force response in the Kuroshio because it was so large in the internal variability. Uh, however, the limited amount of simulation undermines our conclusion. So getting more simulation runs, uh, especially for the MM, uh, ensemble, would therefore validate your results. Uh, the, uh, moreover, like more likely in my PhD, I will also use higher spatial resolution, so the IF of IRSMIP at a resolution of one twelfth of degree. And, uh, the Alu thermosteric trends to, uh, confirm the present results and refine the, or understanding on the processes applied originally, um, more likely around the Gulf Streams. Uh, thank, thank you. For that.
Hey, thank you very much, Benoit. Um, are there any questions? Um, I see, are there lots of hands? Let me just check here. Yin Zhong, please.
Uh, I just want to know is that, uh, what type of signal in C level? Is that the steric, some steric part or is it dynamical part? If you get different result, if you separate them or not?
It's a dynamic C level for now, but, uh, I intend to, uh, calculate the steric part later in my PhD. For now, I'm just starting the PhD, so I'm just such like, uh, signal.
Only dynamical part.
But for now, it's only the dynamical part, yes.
Thank you.
And Malcolm, please.
So, yeah, so Benoit, that's, that's really nice. So I guess a couple of points. So, I mean, there won't be any more ensemble members of MM run of the CIP six model. Um, but one thing that would be interesting would be to know whether the high res MIP simulations give you similar, um, similar results, similar patterns. Because at least with high res MIP, running more ensemble members, well, not necessarily the CIP six model, but CIP, you know, high res MIP is a shorter experiment. So if the results were similar, that would encourage us to run, you know, more ensemble members, maybe for CIP seven at, at that resolution, because it's more manageable to run from nineteen fifty than it is to do a pre-industrial spinup. So it will be really interesting to know whether high res MIP simulations look the same or look completely different, given the, the different experiment.
Uh, so IRSMIP simulation, I, I tested them and, uh, I just didn't choose them for this poster because we had less of them at the time of the poster. But, uh, there are the, the one I'm interested in actually.
Okay.
And, uh, yes, as I just And uh yes, as I display, similar patterns uh than those one. They are not exactly the same, but they are very similar.
Okay, that's encouraging. And then my other question was in the the observed trends, there was quite a big um uh change in the Western Tropical Pacific, um so near the Maritime Continent. But the models don't seem to have any of that signal at all. Is is that something that you understand or um if have you got any theories as to why the models don't seem to pick up that signal at all?
Uh can you repeat where I didn't understand?
So yeah, so in the tropical Western Pacific, so that big red red area kind of by the Maritime Continent, north of Australia. So the models seem to show, I don't know whether that's because the models don't do that the El Nino goes too far to the west or whether there's there's another likely reason.
Yeah, my my hypothesis is that we're only at twenty two years. So uh it's still influenced by uh Enso variability.
Okay, okay.
But uh it's only in hypothesis, I uh
Right.
I don't know exactly.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, Benoit. That worked very well. Thank you. Um I think we should continue with Raker then. I don't know how you want to handle that. Did you find the the fair bottom?
Yeah, I think it might be a problem with the Webex uh on Linux, so maybe if Marie could share, that would be great.
Do that. Share.
Emma, would you be ready to go?
Uh yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very well.
Okay, let's see if I can share the screen. Um Okay. Right, uh can you see my screen?
Yeah, we can see us very well ourselves.
Right. Okay, so at Yijiu, uh can you still see?
Yes.
Okay, I brought a poster which was very much an outlook into the future. So my future plans and it's mainly focused on the idea of tracking marine heatwaves using the ICON model. So I'm gonna through go through it briefly and show you what's written on it. So in the first box, we have an introduction to what marine heatwaves are. So we have the HOPE Day two thousand and sixteen definition, which defines a marine heatwave as um an anomaly of temperature, which is in the ninetieth percentile. It has to be at least five days long and it has to have gaps that are no longer than two days. Which means that, for example, if we have, say, five days of marine heatwave and then a two-day gap and then six days of a marine heatwave, that will be counted as a thirteen days event. Whereas if we have five days of heat and then two days of cold and then two days of heat, there will be a five-day event. So this is how HOPE Day has defined the detection of running heatwaves and that mostly what the community does. But because of this, well, because of um the availability of satellite uh data, most studies on marine heatwaves are on the surface. So from this, I go into subsurface marine heatwaves. We know that they can subduct beyond the mixed layer depth. Here I'm showing a graph from Aike Con. He's a postdoc here at ETH Zurich in our group. And he started the subduction of marine heatwaves. So here we can see um a marine heatwave that went beyond the mixed layer and it lingered in in the ocean interior for a couple of years and then abducted beyond the mixed layer depth, so back to the surface. This scale that you see here on the right is basically the how extreme is the temperature compared to the threshold? So to make it clearer, let's say we have T that it's one, so we're maybe like here, T that it's two, or maybe here, T that it's three, maybe here. That's the idea behind this variable over here. So we know that they can go beyond the mixed layer depth, but we haven't started them much. And they can go under undergo intensification relative to the local temperature that we would find at those depths. So then I also went briefly into the importance of eddies, considering also this area, so we know that we care. And we know that eddies are very important for the energetic budget of the ocean. They can act to increase or decrease temperature anomalies during the growing and decaying phases of the marine heatwaves. And they are very relevant in areas like the western boundary current regions, the southern ocean, the central eastern Pacific Ocean. And they have an uh an impact on the evolution of both surface and subsurface marine heatwaves. And here I just showed um an image of eddies tracked with PIADE tracker, just to give an idea of how they can look. And finally, the last part of my poster was basically the outlook, so what I plan to do. So the image that you saw at the center of the poster was made with OSTRAC, which is a Python package developed by Hilary Scannell and others. And it allows to identify and track marine heatwaves at the surface. So my plan is to build on top of this tool to make it fully four-dimensional. So that we are allowed, we are able to see how marine heatwaves evolve in three dimensions as we track them in time. And to see what is the role of mesoscale variability, what are the main pathways of these events and just in general, see what are the main drivers of this marine heatwaves when we're able to see them, let's say, fully. And then just to conclude, since there was very uh big image at the center of my poster over here, I'll just show the plot from which it came, which was uh tracking of one event with ICON data using uh OSTRAC. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Emma. Are there any any questions? I'm wondering a little bit whether these subsurface marine heatwaves, I mean, there's been some discussion, I think, in the nineteen nineties on uh two thousands on reemergence, you know, Clara, Desa, Michael Alexander and 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 others. So whether some of this thinking, you know, comes into play here. I mean, normally the thinking was, I think it was forced somehow by the surface and then covered by some mixed level layer, then resurfaced and you know, the year later, but perhaps some of this can be can be useful for uh for for education. Uh Anne Marie, please.
Oh yes, I wanted to ask whether you have a criterion for uh the spatial scale of a marine heatwave, because there are a lot of eddies in the ocean. And for example, if you think about a Medhi, which is an anomaly of warm and salty uh water from Mediterranean origin, you find them all over in the Atlantic. So do they can they be labeled marine heatwave by your tracking software or does it has to be big to be called the marine heatwave?
The way Hilary Scannell defined this was that it had to be at least eight grid spaces in area. I think, sorry, in radius. And there was also a minimum area threshold, so she tracked mainly uh big events. But this is a parameter parameter that it's completely um modifiable. So I think I will adopt it relative to where I'm looking, so to the region that I'm focusing on, definitely, yeah.
Any further questions? Malcolm.
Maybe I could ask, sorry. Okay, so maybe I can ask a, sorry, a really technical question. So have you managed to get OSTRAC to work reasonably efficiently? I think I did try it on some quarter-degree data and it took a very, very long time to to go through any of the data. Have you have you tried it on global fields at any resolutions to to see how well it runs?
What do you mean by a very long time? Because it did take a while, but not too long.
Okay. Yeah, I I yeah, I don't remember the exact time, but yeah, I kind of set it going and then thought, hmm, that's not really gonna do do the trick. Um.
I used the, well, the structured uh grid outputs and it was a quarter-degree resolution.
Okay.
But it it worked quite well, I have to say.
Okay. All right, good.
Okay, then I think we can move on and try with you and try your presentation again. Anne Marie, over to you.
So um if I do share what happens, choose something to share. So this is one I want to share. And then I put it full screen and then you have to tell me when to change.
Yes, I will. Thank you so much. Okay, three times the jump. So, thank you everyone. Um I'll talk about the poster that uh presented the results from the study called Spatial Variation of Future Trends in Atlantic Upwelling, since it's from CMAP six models. And we can go to the next slide. Thank you. Um so what we know is that upwelling regions play a very important role, both ecologically and economically in our oceans. And looking at their future and the global global climate change, there is two uh prevalent hypotheses that have been stated, one of which is an overall increase in upwelling, also called the Bacon hypothesis, or another one that says that there will be a polar migration of the upwelling with an intensification in the polar portions and a decrease in the equatorward portions. And recent work with high-resolution models, coupled models, has shown some regional differences. So we used vertical velocities from CMAP six and high-resolution like high-res models to assess these two upwappings in the Atlantic Ocean, the Canary, you can see that here at the top, and the Venezuela here at the bottom. Um and we divided them into three subregions for each to be able to capture spatial variations and to be able to look at or like take into account their seasonal cycle in the analysis, because they have different seasonal cycles. So for each of those boxes, we take the vertical water mass transport from two models with different resolutions ranging from one degree to a twelfth of a degree from the HGM model from the Met Office and the CNR and CM six one model. And then integrated the vertical water mass transport zonally from the coast towards the open ocean and averaged this over the whole subregion. So for each of those boxes, we compared this from the historical period, so nineteen ninety five, two thousand fourteen, to a future period under the high emissions scenario, SSP five eight dot five one. Next slide, please. Thank you. Uh here we can see some results from this. So on the left side is again just to see the regions and where they are located. And then in the center, we can see the results from the historical um simulation on the HGM uh medium resolution model, so at one quarter-degree ocean resolution. Uh this shows a transect of the water column. Um and we can see the transect from the coast, so toward the open ocean until five degrees of shore. And um the water column shows from the surface to two hundred meters of depth. And this shows the integrated vertical transport. Um it shows at the top the two cells for the Canary and at the bottom for the Venezuela system. And we always compare the northern and the southern cell. Um it became obvious that there is differences in the cells regarding the maximum of the transport in regards to its distance to the coast and its depth, where it is located, and also the vertical extent of the cell. Um and also obviously the intensity of the maximum. Uh we can see that here, for example, in the Canary, if you look at the, well, left column of the cells, um that the maximum is located far closer to the coast in the northern part than it is in the southern part. And that is the same in the Venezuela, where it is located closer to the coast in the northern part and further away from the southern part. And we see a higher vertical extent in the southern parts as well. Um these spatial variations also persist in the future. And we could also see that the differences that these cells experience uh can depend on where they are located. So for example, here, the equatorward cells show a decrease in the maximum, while the polar cells for both upwelling regions show an increase in the vertical extent. Uh we then try to quantify, or we then quantify this by taking one point at one degree of shore and fifty meters depth and looked at the time series and fit in an error regression to look at the trend per century. Uh here we can see this for the medium and the low resolution models. Uh for the Canary and the Venezuela system, for each of the of the subregions. And the black bar shows the ninety percent confidence limitation. So in the Canary, we've seen that um both water for degree models show an increase in the northern and the central cell, while in the southern cell, they differ in sign and in intensity and are not significant. And in the Venezuela, we have the two Met Office models that show a significant decrease in the northern parts, while the other um subregions show differences in sign and also in intensities. Uh so with this, what we could say is that um the overall increase hypothesis of upwelling, we could um reject it since in the northern part of the Venezuela, we have a significant decrease in two models. But since not all the results are significant, we can either reject or accept that polar hypothesis, polar migration hypothesis either. So what our results highlight are um that the trends might differ regionally. And we also saw that the performance in representing the upwelling cells and the temperature of upwelling and the cold upwelling signal on the coast were a lot better with higher resolution. So since changes were most likely occur in upwelling systems after two thousand fifty, we are looking forward to the Erie projections and think there will be a big asset for looking into these regions up to two thousand four hundred. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Raker. It's very, very interesting. Um perhaps coming back to your to your last point, um you know, that you that you're looking forward to the simulations, especially after twenty fifty. I mean, we all do, I suppose. But is there anything that really sort of physically that makes the changes emerge after twenty fifty, you know? Or is it just that these things happen so slowly that you are able to uh you know, to detect them in twenty fifty? Or is there sort of a reason to believe that something is going through the sky a little bit later on? Uh so what's the interpretation of that?
Um so I'm not sure that we know the exact reasons for this. It's just something that has been observed by the IPCC already as well. And I've seen that in some of the timelines of it as well, where the changes were like the line really went like this and then up or down after two thousand fifty. But since I own it at several numbers, I couldn't make like a very qualitative or quantitative assessment about this.
Okay, thank you. And Malcolm?
Thank you. Yeah, so that's that's really interesting. I come back to a similar question, I guess. So but if if we choose kind of Erie stroke the next high-res MIP for the recommended future scenario to be a much more moderate one, so I don't know SSP two four five rather than SSP five eight five. Is that a problem? So you've got more years, but the the forcing is weaker. Um so because it is a question both for high-res MIP and I guess for when our simulations get to do the future period, whether you want a a stronger but maybe not very realistic future forcing so that you get a signal or you have a more realistic quote-unquote forcing, but you have a less less strong signal and then maybe you need more ensemble members or more other things. So I'd be interested in in any thoughts.
Um so I mean, these regions are all like, or at least what we saw from the vertical water mass transport, there's a lot of inter annual variability. So in order to have a signal and a significant signal that will also show in statistics, you would probably have to have a strong change. But then ultimately, the goal of all these works is always to see best what would happen. So I guess if you have a more realistic model, it's also better for the analysis and the results.
Okay, right. Thanks.
Perhaps we can hope for higher resolution models to somehow earlier produce something, right? It's a possibility. Okay, any further questions? That doesn't seem to be the case. So I think we thought up a little bit on our agenda, on our timeline. Um so in principle, we have some time to raise some further questions, make any comments. Going back to previous presentations, is there anything anyone would like to bring up to ask? The post, Malcolm, that's an old hand, right?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Just a check. Seems that everything Seems that everything is crystal clear. And Molly?
Yes, with Raquel, we were thinking that maybe next spring we could find a master student because Raquel is in the second part of her PhD and she's supposed to do other things or her PhD. And so we were thinking that maybe we could find a master student to do some analysis in Erie simulations. But I I don't know whether in next spring we would have already scenarios. Maybe that would be too early. Maybe we would have to wait the year after. I don't know.
I mean, my guess is that we should be having something even beyond twenty fifty by spring next year. And that's my 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 take. I mean, unless I find, I think the biggest risk for me, I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't think that the risk is us not getting the run through. A risk could be that we decide that the the model performance doesn't look good and we make phase one shorter than originally anticipated. Okay. So if we think, you know, I mean, if we if we see there are some issues in the simulation, if we know what the cure is for that and make the the simulation better, there could be a decision perhaps that we, you know, start phase two earlier, which would at least us then with shorter phase one simulations, but we don't know yet. So but I think throughput wise, I would expect next spring the data to be there. But you know, perhaps there are.
Anyway, it's something we would have to decide around October, I guess. So by that time, maybe we will see more clearly whether there are some interesting simulations that we would like to use for such a study. Yeah.
I think we will get a good feeling for the for the throughput of the model, you know, how they're in terms of available computing time in the next few weeks when we really start. And I hope that we have a meeting tomorrow very clarify IFS configurations that we actually certainly offer the IFS port based models that we are very close to submitting phase one simulations. So tomorrow may be there. I would find that point.
I mean, granted, it's low resolution, but I have my my low resolution model, I've already finished two simulations at twenty one hundred with SSP two four five. And the the medium is still doing, oh, it's towards the end of the historic at the moment. So the medium will have done the scenario in a couple of months' time. But yeah, the high resolution will be, yeah, middle of next year before it gets through to twenty one hundred, I think. Yeah.
And I mean, this paper is submitted, but if the reviewers ask for more ensemble members, maybe we will have to go back to you, Malcolm. Ask help for the.
Yeah, I hope so. I do. When I review papers, I do try and ask, don't ask for more data, ask, you know, if they're not convinced, then ask for more analysis. But I, you know, myself don't like when reviewers say you need to run more simulations because that's not, that's just a cheap way out as a reviewer. Yeah. So fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions, comments? That doesn't seem to be the case. Probably it's been a long day for all of us and so.
I mean, I'd just like to say, thank you. That that was, they were really high quality. So thank you all very much. That's been, that's been really great. And it's been really nice to get a summary of all the different things that are that are happening in terms of analysis. And maybe, I mean, we have been, I mean, as as Thomas said at the start, this this was a bit short, short notice. And maybe we need to figure out a way. I mean, obviously, we'll have the monthly science hours going forwards, but you know, maybe every few months, we we have something like this. You know, there's obviously big meetings going on through the year just to collect some some talks and have some really nice kind of concentrated, relatively short, but a really nice overview. And as I said, there are potentially some interesting links to between some of these different analyses. So so that's, yeah, it's been, I've really, really enjoyed the last hour or so. It's been great. Thank you.
Yeah, perhaps the last thing that we can say then is that, you know, we are going to make small little videos out of your your contributions and that you are going to share them. If you really have strong objections, let us know, but otherwise we assume that you are happy to 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 share your results. And with this, yeah, I thank you again very much for your contributions and I'm looking forward to seeing you next week to the next year's science hour. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.